...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
So, I'm just gonna talk about a couple reminders. Annual town meeting is set for next Thursday at 6:30 at the Brookfield Elementary School. And I also wanna get out to the public that Gay Road construction has begun, this tree work going on, this cross culvert's going on. Please be patient with the Highway Department. They're doing the best of their ability. They will continue to fill potholes. If you have any concerns, reach out to the Highway Department directly, or you can call us like Board Office as well. I guess that's it. Ron, do you wanna go with the warrants?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have three warrants for us this evening. We have fiscal year '25-24 payroll warrant in the amount of $218,995.23. We also have a withholding warrant in the amount of $132,000, $142.04. And we also have an accounts payable warrant in the amount of $20,000... $20,000...
Oh, I'm sorry, two seven... It's 157.
157.
Okay, 157 and 15 cents.
Stutter step.
Yeah, let's just say it started here.
Yeah.
Harry, I guess we'll start with number one. The...you know what, I think...I wonder if we should just pass on that a little bit? Do you mind that there's no cemetery commissioners here, so we'll take you out of order?
Give it a bit of time.
Give it some time, yes.
As long as it's not the last one on board.
We'll try to make that happen for you, Kermit. All right. Resignation of Robert Falter from the Board of Assessors. Sorry to hear that he's resigned, but I guess he'd been talking about it for a little while, and so I guess we'll accept his resignation with regret. Number three on the list is...
Before we move on, can I just ask a question, Karen?
Sure.
What's the procedure for filling that position?
Yeah, for any of the elected boards, obviously assessor being elected, generally what'll happen is we can advertise the vacancy, which has already been approximately a week, Karen?
Yes.
It's been advertised. And as we receive letters of interest, then what we can do is convene a joint meeting, the board and the remaining assessors, and then we can have a vote. Obviously, if the joint board wants to perform interviews or deliberations, then they can actually make a vote at that joint meeting. Each member of the joint meeting each having a vote.
Great. Thank you.
Have we had any interest yet, Karen?
No, I actually...I didn't post it, because when I talked to someone who said that they were gonna ask around and see who was interested, and typically the assessor's office posts it or tells me to post it, so I'm leaving it. We haven't really accepted his resignation today.
Would you mind...okay, so would you mind posting it?
Absolutely.
And I'll also speak to Patty to see if she'll post it as well?
Yeah.
And could we get the Communications Committee to make that post as well?
Yeah, we posted it two weeks ago.
Oh, you did?
Oh, you did. Good.
We posted it on website when Patty came, where she reached out to me about the vacancy.
Okay, so Patty did reach out?
Yep.
Very good.
Great.
Perfect. Thanks, Steve.
We're ahead of the date.
Yeah, so it's posted there. Do we know if that meets posting requirements or not? Have we ever gotten that established, if under...
For our website? I believe it is. I believe that is the official posting for the town of Brookfield, so that should satisfy it. Obviously, we have the ability to extend a wider net if we so choose.
No, that's fine. It's there, I'm happy. Thank you.
Item number three on the agenda to...we have a request for Tiptop to use the Town Hall on 61425. Well, entertain a motion for that.
Motion to allow the use of the Town Hall on 61425 for Tiptop.
And that's you generally let them in, so you got it? Thank you for that.
I'll roll out of bed and come over.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number four, endorsing Joint District 7 West Regional Emergency Planning Committee. So, I spoke to Peter a little bit about that today. He said there's either six or seven towns involved that could set it up, so I'll entertain a motion for that as well.
I'll go ahead and give you the motion to support or endorse, actually, joining the District 7 West One Region Emergency Planning Committee.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number five. Our Highway Department is...has now actually hired Andrew McDermott, and this is just the formality to appoint him, so I'll look for a motion for that as well.
Okay. I'll give you a motion, actually, to appoint both Andrew McDermott as operator two and Jeffrey Tibbetts as seasonal worker. Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
The only discussion is that I just think Kyle's doing a great job of building a team down there, and I think that a lot of the quality of the employee that we're attracting right now is a direct response to the type of leadership and tone he's trying to set. I just...I hope we're giving him the space he needs in order to make the work happen the way it ought to.
Yeah, agreed. I think he's doing a great job. He asked me to take a ride down to Gay Road with him today, so I did, and he pointed out some of the things he's doing. What a great highway superintendent, just attention to detail, and the work is really done well, and he's moving forward with the process, so...
Yep.
Yeah, good. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven, for another motion for the Emergency Response Coordinator.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we appoint Peter Martell as Emergency Response Coordinator. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number eight, Board of Registers Nancy Mannix.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Nancy Mannix to the Board of Registars.
All right.
Second?
All...any discussion?
I thought she was already appointed. What was it?
I think she does something on senior workers.
Oh, she was one of the election workers. Or was she...or was she one of the election workers now bringing on the registrar?
I think that's it.
But I think she does something with the seniors as well, so...
She's on the council on age.
Council on age, yeah.
Okay, all right. She was never a registrar.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I think she is one of our election workers, maybe. Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thank you for Nancy for stepping up, and I also wanna thank Peter Martell for stepping up as well.
Yeah, it's really good, especially with emergency management, to do the regional engagement.
Well, in speaking to him, it just allows us to participate for more grants, and absolutely that's...
Yeah, there's a lot of benefits to it. He's trying to look out for the town and ensure that we're eligible for that sort of thing.
So, number nine, conservation. So, we'll go from nine to 11, three conservation agents.
Is that conservation agent?
Oh, not agent, conservation commissioner. Conservation members.
Okay.
Their members.
I can make the motion, and then we can have the discussion, or we can have the discussion and make the motion?
Yeah, well, we'll make the motion, second it, and then have the discussion.
To say before we make the motion, since the MEPSs have not officially resigned yet, we don't physically have a resignation. What I would request and recommend is that we make the appointments...
Continue.
...with a term to begin on January 5th. That's when we should...
June 5th.
Because that's when we should have the resignation papers in.
For the meeting ready for you.
Well, I hate to put it this way. Is there any meeting scheduled prior to the ATM for the Conservation Commission?
No, our next meeting is June 18th.
Okay, so we typically would appoint right after the annual town meeting anyway. Do we have a...do we have a meeting at, like, between the annual town meeting and the 18th?
Could. It depends on what we discuss and how things go, so it could be. So, we could put it off, but I didn't ask to put it off based on the interest. I thought it would be good to appoint them. They've showed interest. The Conservation Commission has interviewed them, and I've had conversation with the Chair, and so, you know, I thought we could just appoint them and have their dates start after the...
Right.
You know, the MEPSs...the MEPSs have clearly indicated they're going to step down, and they just formally done it.
But they haven't given us the paperwork.
Yeah, we don't physically have the resignation paper. I agree with Rich. All indications are that they are ready to resign.
Yeah, but it's still...it winds up a problem unless we rescind the vote that appoints them. Do we have the date that we voted the MEPSs? Because the other way we can do it is that if they've indicated that they're planning on resigning, I don't have an objection to rescinding the vote as of the date that we appointed the MEPSs, and then that's the only legal way to do it tonight.
Yeah, too many people on the board, I understand.
Yeah, I'm not trying to...I'm not trying to get in the way of progress. I'm just trying to make sure we don't step in something, so...and it would probably stink if we ever stepped in.
I mean, we could literally just pass over it, and Steve, if you wanna let them know why, that it's nothing about their application, but it's simply formality that we would have too many members on the board until the MEPS resigns?
Do we have any slots open?
We have one.
Okay. Is...is there someone based on your...I mean, if you had to pick one tonight?
Yes. Steve Santucci, because he's here.
Because he's here. You know what? Attendance counts, Steve. All right? So, I'll make a motion that we appoint Steve Santucci today.
I'll second that. Any other discussion? No, I'm good. All in favor?
Aye.
Sarah, you gonna...
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay. Welcome aboard. Thank you for your involvement.
Oh, good point.
I'm still...
Well, actually, I don't know that that constitutes a conflict of interest.
I don't know, but I abstained for the conversation, so, yeah, that's fine. So, I'm just gonna do it for both.
Better safe than sorry.
Yeah.
Can I...I do wanna make just one comment, and I'm sure that you probably...because I know that you're a very thorough guy. Can we just make sure he gets a copy of the reg, like, sooner rather than later?
Yes. The Wildlife Protection Act?
Yes.
From the bylaws?
Yeah, the 21 pages, that's the only thing you have to really worry about when you're on Conservation Commission.
But also, also the Wetland Protection Act as well.
Well, that's what I'm talking about, the 21 pages.
Well, we have two. There's two. We have the in-town regulation, but the state regulation as well.
That's the one I was talking about.
Well, that one's like 500 pages.
21 pages is a good start.
Yeah.
You can do that.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, no, it's...
I don't want him to resign tonight, too.
Harry. Number 12, All Boards Clerk Discussion. Go ahead, Sarah.
Well, we cut the hours to five hours last week...last week? Week before, whatever?
My last meeting, yeah.
Last meeting. So, I kinda just wanted to throw out there the job description and kinda have the job description reflect the hours, so I kinda struck out some things, and, yeah. Just so that we can give her some direction on what she's supposed to be doing now in those five hours for each board. I think Kevin and Steve are here, too, so if they wanna...
Yeah, I know on the roof...so, one of the things I'm curious about, frankly, and I wasn't here for the conversation, and given some of the things I have going on outside of both here and work, I have not reviewed the tapes. Five hours, depending on the week or month, particularly for Planning Board, but Concom as well, your work is cyclic, so I wanna just be careful about how we budgeted that, given...I see that as just setting ourselves up to fail on the budget by doing it that way, personally. But...and I don't know if the respective chairs of the service boards have any opinion on that or not.
So, the one conversation I had with Steve, and I've done a lot of permitting through wetlands and planning, and this town is unique in the way that we've had it set up for the All Boards Clerk to do the work of the contractor, and I am totally against that. Someone wants to come to town and do a project, we shouldn't have the taxpayers of the community facilitate that for the contractor, and that's literally what we've been doing.
Well, it's in our description. It says assisting residents slash public with application process and forms, so...
Based on...based on the old job description, animals don't even need to hire a wetland specialist. Typically, when I go permit a project, I hire a wetland specialist or an engineer, and they can do that with the old job description. However, this town is unique in doing that, and it shouldn't be done on the backs of the taxpayer, and I firmly believe that, and I'm not gonna budge on that part. So, yes, can someone assist? Absolutely. Can they be helpful and give them some paperwork? Absolutely. But we shouldn't be doing the notifications for them. That's their obligation. If you hire Green Hill Engineering, Green Hill Engineering does it. If you hire Burton Engineering, they do it. But when you come to Brookfield, the All Board Clerk does it. Not only do they do that...oh, in the past, Steve, I see you shaking your head, but in the past, I've literally witnessed that, so...
Oh, I heard.
Okay, so...
Very finished.
So, you've been the chair for just the...
Two weeks.
Two weeks, right? So, and you've been on the board how long?
Five months.
Five months. So, I've witnessed this for the last several years while we've had an All Boards Clerk, and I don't agree with how it's happening, and I agree that we can be helpful to someone that comes in, but we shouldn't be doing the work for them. So, that's their obligation to hire whoever they wanna hire or do it on...if they wanna learn the process as Omar, they're welcome to do that or as a contractor, but we shouldn't be paying a secretary here to do it for them. So, that's my opinion, and that's how we voted last week to drop the hours, so that's all I have to say. Any other discussion? Otherwise, I'm gonna open it up to the floor.
I'm interested in what...
Well, obviously...
Either you, given your experience being a former All Boards Clerk, or what the chairs wanna say, so I'm all ears right now. I don't know if it's...
Well, let them go first.
All right, Rich, I'll address your point first. Wetland specialists are still hired to assess the property. If they need to do a wetland delineation or any reporting on the site conditions, those parties are still involved. What our All Boards Clerk is doing, which I agree with you with, is legal notices. So, right now, we need to make...publish legal notices in local newspapers at least five business days in advance. I think that we can improve that process. We can come up with a template, so either we or the applicant can feasibly and quickly handle this. The part that we've been failing on is the billing aspect of it, in my opinion, because that's coming out of our account initially, and then we have to chase the applicants down afterwards, and in many cases, we've been failing on that. We've been billing the Planning Board on a couple locations earlier this year, as opposed to the Conservation Commission, and I'm just catching up on these...this legal behavior. So, I think we need to start charging a flat fee for applications that account for that responsibility for legal notices. It's not that much work if we have a template. It's just a matter of filling in the site location, the applicant's name, the date of the meeting. We just need to get that process in place, and we're talking about that next meeting so we can speed that up. I don't necessarily think that is something that we have to pass on to the applicant if we have a template, because if we are in charge of the legal notices and we're familiar with the process, we can ensure that the public hearings are properly scheduled five business days in advance without putting too much of a burden on a...either a board member or an All Boards Clerk for that task.
Yeah, it turns it from a couple of hours because of the chasing after the fact to, like, a five or 10-minute transactional thing.
Yeah.
But that's my point, right? When I go to another town to apply, there are several documents that I have to...before the board will hear me, I have to prove that I have a registered butter list, I have to prove that I sent out green cards, and I have to prove that I advertised it properly, and I make the payment. Why would the town even wanna get into this paper shuffle and chase people for money? And frankly, that's what's been taking a lot of the time, and why? Just have the applicant do it.
The applicant does all of that except for the legal notices. So, the applicant does go to the Board of Assessors, get the butter list, send it to butter notifications. They do reach out to the Commission. They submit their own paperwork to the DEP for the RDA or NOI, as they are legally obligated to. But the part of the Conservation Commission in our bylaw is not very clear on it. It just says that there will be a legal notice published in a local newspaper in circulation five business days in advance at the applicant's expense. It does not say who, per se, does it. I don't necessarily see it as a huge burden for us to do it, but we need to make sure that it's at the applicant's expense, and we have the process in place where it's not a huge ordeal for us to publish notifications. If we've got a template, we've got the responsible party doing it, it's a few minutes of work.
Nothing's done in a few minutes, frankly, but anyway, I just don't understand why we would take the burden on as...if they don't do their paperwork properly, the hearing doesn't take place, and most people are frankly aware of the process. If they're not, that's when they hire their professional, and all those professional firms do all of that for the applicant. So, again, I don't think anything can be done in just a couple minutes, and why burden the taxpayer for it? Let's just do it in a manner that once we get that system set up, it'll be really clear. The applicant gets the...what goes in the paper by the board, the date the hearing will happen, and when that does, they do have to do their questions. They can call, they can look it up. There's a lot of ways to accomplish that, but I don't agree with us doing it for them.
Okay, well, we can try that out and give them the template for the legal notices with their information filled in. It's gonna take us at least a few minutes to fill in their details and then to instruct them to go to Stonebridge Press or Telegram and Gazette and to publish a legal notice five business days in advance and so forth. We can try that out. I don't think it's necessarily that much effort to reach out to those papers if they do it.
It's gonna be almost as much effort to verify that they did it right as it is to just do it.
Yeah.
But that...you know what? We're holding up a whole bunch of people over a conversation that probably isn't...
It's just a blank...
...value-added, so...
It's a blank form that's gonna change.
Sure.
It's gonna change whether it's a hearing, whether it's a request of determination or a notice of intent, the date and the reason for the hearing, so...
Sure. There are other aspects that I think are worth noting, so for the Conservation Commission, once we have an order of conditions or determination, we do need to mail by certified mail with return receipts to the applicant. That takes time as well. Filling of those forms takes time. That can be a task that's appointed to a commissioner. It costs money to do that as well, so we can put on a commissioner to do the billing for that, too. I've done that right now for the five RDAs and NOIs we've had in the past two weeks. It comes out of my pocket, and I have to go to the accountant and get reimbursed for that, so...
Again, why would we even do that?
Because it's the Conservation Commission's responsibility to mail out forms that we are legally required to fill out. We issue the determination of applicability. We issue the order of conditions. The law says that the Conservation Commission mails this out to the applicants. They can't mail it out to themselves because we are the ones generating the form.
I get it, but a lot of times it can happen right at the meeting. It could happen at the very next meeting, and it could be...it could be picked up, but if some of it does have to happen that way, I guess there's no avoiding some of it.
Yeah, so there are...
To simplify it is what I'm looking for.
Yeah, and I think we can.
To be less of a burden on the town.
I think we can, but there are other responsibilities that the All Boards Clerk does handle. They are a phone point of contact for both the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board. To have somebody five hours a week to service phone calls to the town does not seem practical whatsoever at that point. If we are cutting the hours down to five hours, I don't think there necessarily should be a phone point of contact. It should just be emails to the chairs of the commissions, because there is not enough time for an All Boards Clerk to be a point of contact for applicants who have questions. It just ends up being more work if they're not a technical point of contact anyway, if they're just forwarding those inquiries to the chairs to correspond with the applicants directly. I think if you're working on the job description right now, I think we should consider whether we wanna maintain them as a public-facing point of contact, or if they are just there for...
Minutes.
Minutes and nothing else.
Yeah.
I mean, 'cause there's a lot of stu...I mean, I saw that you wind out a bunch of stuff on here, but honestly, about the only thing they're gonna have time for is gonna be maybe minutes.
Yeah.
Maybe some of the mailing.
Which is fine, but I think we should put that in black and white, that we want her to do the minutes and whatever, so that way she has some sort of direction of what she's supposed to do in the five hours.
So, let me ask you this.
What her top priorities are.
We've had an All Boards Clerk for approximately four or five weeks now for 10 hours a week. How many minutes were done in that 40 or 50 hours?
That I've received, I haven't received any yet. I don't necessarily think that's a reflection of whether 10 hours a week is too much or not enough, however. I don't know if it's a personnel issue. Granted, Holly has only been with us for five weeks. We've had three meetings on the Conservation Commission. I think it takes time to get her bearings, and I believe that she will give us those minutes when it's...when they're ready for us to review. So, I don't necessarily...I don't necessarily think we should conflate whether work is being done versus whether there's enough hours.
Right.
Those are separate topics, in my mind.
A point, though, we do have to be careful about minutes. You know, every third meeting, we're supposed to have at least a draft, so as soon as she gets the draft on, we need to...she needs to at least be posting or having some sort available, just in case we get a public records request or something along those lines. But if minutes are gonna be the main thing, then that's fine with me.
Yeah, so...
Anything else?
No, I think that's it.
Okay.
Harry, thank you.
All right. Jeff, do you mind coming up? I'm sorry to make you come up, but you're gonna get me in trouble with the cable coordinator if you don't.
Jeff Clark, 101 Brunel Avenue. Sorry. Sitting down again. Just out of curiosity, because as advisory committee, we have not really analyzed the All Board Clerk role responsibility or hours in the three or four years it's been in existence. It's sort of, okay, fine. So, I'm a little bit concerned. I'm not quite sure if some way we could quantify how many hours the All Boards Clerk is actually doing the work in the last couple of years. Again, I don't have that knowledge, but I just wanna throw that out there, because, again, I hear what you're saying, but making an arbitrary...I mean, not say arbitrary, but just reasoned decision to cut it in half or whatever it is, I don't know where the data is, other than from the Conservation Commission standpoint. I don't know about plating or the other duties that the person has.[1717.51] I don't know about planning or or the the other duties that the person has. So I would just caution that we at least try to examine that or if someone has other information to to bring it forward, um, because I'd hate for us to have a backlog or get jammed up or have more lawsuits because next year, you know, the minutes weren't done or whatever it is that because we have some litigation going on now that I'm concerned about. So that that was my only point because again, we can look at it much more in depth next year and ask the department heads or whomever to to provide information as far as, you know, as a person sitting there for two hours and not doing anything or or whatever. But, you know, at the moment, we just, I I don't know. So I couldn't, I couldn't add, just from a advisory committee standpoint, it's it's sort of a concern to me and I think the members also, I mean, if you're thinking about that also, Sarah, I mean, because you're both committees now or whatever, both. But that's what popped up to me just listening to the discussion. Um, so, thank you.
Well, thank you. So.
Kevin?
You know, the one thing I, do you run? I'd like you to keep track of time so that we're consistent, too, right? And so sorry I dropped the ball.
How you doing, Kevin? Thank you. Chairman O'Callaghan, Chair of the Planning Board. Just to let you know, I hear what you're saying about not wanting to burden the townsfolk, but there are more than one way to burden them. To most of the people that come before the planning board, that have come before the planning board in the nearly 15 years that I've been on it, have been residents of the town. And we want to provide them with good service. We don't want to make them have to run around and do things that they're not really, uh, in any point to understand, maybe this is the first time they've ever done that before in their life, whereas we know what the process is. So what we've been doing has been working. It is reasonable, reasonably efficient, and it gets people the answers that they need in the time that they need it. So I don't want to do anything that's going to mess with that because that costs people money, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm all set. I just wanted to.
Beth, do you have anything else?
Get it up there.
Will we move on?
So what I'd like to do is table this for a future meeting.
Yeah, we can.
Okay, because I think I think we do, I I think there's a, I think there's a couple of clear clear things. I think that there's, one, obviously, the minutes do need to be a priority. This town has been horrible for years, generations, on getting minutes on file in a timely manner. That shit needs to stop. That needs to be one of the things that we're working on as a priority.
Yeah.
However, to some of the chair's points, I think there are aspects of the additional work that are important. And I think, I think one of the things that would be helpful is, is could y'all come back with a prioritized list of the things that you would like to see this clerk doing since they're functionally working for your department? It's one thing that we delineate the budget, but they're functionally your clerk. So I think we need to get the board, I think we need to not disrespect the boards and get their priorities about what they want their clerk to be doing for their town. And if we want to modify that, because granted, because remember, we are the appointing authority for the conservation commission. The planning board is an elected independent board that we need to respect some of what they want relative and prior to this being an all boards clerk, the lion's share of the funding for this position was for a planning board clerk for decades prior to this period. So before we start deciding that the all boards clerk is limited to this little tiny space, let's understand what we've been doing for the last 15 years from the planning board and actually support them in the way that their money was supporting a town for the last two decades. That's what I gotta say about this, but let's move on for tonight.
All right. So we'll.
Actually, before we leave, Mr. Chair, one of the things that was unclear with the vote last week was when the reduction from 10 hours to five hours, would that take place immediately or on seven one or sometime in between?
I think I'm good with going to to new fiscal year, so, but I.
So effective seven one.
Well, I want to, I want to hear from the other two. How about you, Sarah? What's your position?
Yeah, I'm okay with seven one.
Okay.
Really, I'm okay with seven one.
Yeah.
That would be intuitively obvious to the casual observer, but seven one, please.
Yeah, can we go?
Seeing how we don't really have much left, I'm gonna take it. I wanted to give every opportunity.
So are you saying questions go now?
Yes, sir. Come on up.
Comenity in 13 West Main Street, Brookfield. Just a brief history, perhaps, for people like Sarah and so forth. The Historic Commission and the Cemetery Commission have worked closely together for 25 years. That's the inception of the preservation plan, management plan, and when we were designated as a historic site. And so they've worked aggressively, very coinvitedly together. The article in 2023, and I'm gonna read this because I'll forget something and I wanna, I know you guys are busy, it should take me three or four minutes at the most. At the town meeting in 2023, an article sponsored by the Cemetery Commission and the Highway Department asked for $60,000 to pave two roads. The Historic Commission was not consulted about this article and the Cemetery Commission was apparently not aware of the preservation management plan. The town voted and the and the select board appointed a cemetery paving committee to work together to assure that all parties agree on what the road would look like following the preservation plan. And I want to point out here, uh, the preservation, the paving committee and the preservation plan does not say how project should be done, it's what should be done, more of an aesthetic kind of a thing. And there was some misunderstanding that the committee was trying to get into how the project should be done. That that's, that's up to the Cemetery Commission and that's up to the Highway Department. So, um, okay, in the in the Cemetery Paving Committee's second meeting, the last meeting with approval, that minutes that I have been able to find in the town archives, the highway superintendent agreed to be the project manager. The highway superintendent stated that the scope of work must include detailed specifications determined by the central plan, the cemetery paving committee. That was not done. The highway department said they would get bids. That was not done. The highway superintendent stated that after the bids were accept, was accepted, the CPC would have to prioritize which roads to pave and seal. Of course, that wasn't done. The CPC discussed four types of chip seal. Actually, it's chip stone. Chip seal is a process, chip seal. And with a, I lost my train of thought here, we we discussed four types of chip seal with no decision finalized. A CPC member recommended using blue trap rock. Again, it was recommend, it was suggested, recommended but not voted on. A CPC member made a motion to have an extension of the CPC term unanimously approved that, that I'm not sure if this was done. It was later stated that the town, the term expired in 2024. There was some disruption in CPC from having meetings to finalize their scope of work, including the C, including, and the CPC has not been, uh, and has not met since that time. The situation that disrupted our meetings, Ryan was preoccupied with the Central Street project and other priorities. His resignation in October 23 followed by four permanent or temporary highway superintendents who are not initially knowledgeable of the CPC role in the cemetery road, road project. Article 26 presented at the, by the Cemetery Commission, once again, without any prior discussion with the Historic Commission to the CPC and the CPC disappointing, the only agreement reached by the CPC in 2023 was the road would be paved and sealed with chip seal or chip stone. The four CPC members request that the select board considered, consider passing over this article. We also feel that the CPC should meet again, hopefully one meeting, to define the scope of work, which includes the type of chip stone, its color, the width of each road, where each road starts and finishes, so that these roads will be in compliance with the preservation management plan. It's up to the select board then to decide what the role of the Cemetery Paving Committee is going to be going forward. Do we have oversight of reviewing the bids like it was suggested? Do we have oversight of the entire project until the project is completed? I'm not sure. But I just, again, want to clarify that we are looking more at aesthetics and we want to make sure this is complied with. And both the article in 2023 and 2025, again, did not address these issues I mentioned. Is there any questions?
Well, I was at that 2023 meeting and it was really clear to me that before the money was to be spent, the paving committee had significant input.
Yeah.
Right?
I would agree with that.
And that, the only thing that, and I've had several conversations about this, would you Kermit, the one, the one thing that you came to us with was that you were told the terms of the paving committee had expired. If that happened, it's just a matter of the select board reappointing that paving committee. And and that's how I feel, that they should be reappointed. However, I don't know where Ron went because he, I want him to weigh in on us because he's actually the one that spoke to town council. Has he talked to you about it, Beth, or Sarah?
He has not.
Okay, so we need Ron to weigh in on us because.
You know where he went?
Yeah, I asked him to do something. He should be back in a minute.
Okay. So, yeah, sorry to stall the cell.
No, that's, that's all right.
But I want, I want to go with the legality portion from our town council, what they said. So I was at the meeting and I agreed that until then, those roads were paved, it was in my mind that the paving committee would be in place.
Yeah, and and I, and I, I think, and you can weigh in if you feel that, it was very clear to me that the townspeople's wish at the time that that vote was taken was that there was acknowledgement that perhaps the warrant article as submitted was lacked completeness and had lacked appropriate consultation with this historical commission and other, other, let's call them involved stakeholders in what the end result of that paving needed to be, right? So, um, and Kermit, to your point, we've had a lot of churn in the, in the highway, which acts functionally as our D P W. In a town with a D P W, the highway would largely have responsibility for this, right? It would be at the request or the behest of either the cemetery commissioners or a group like the the CPC, but, um, but functionally speaking, that, that project would usually fall in the D P W. One of the things I was wondering about is that I think that the C, in my opinion, CPC still has a role to make those final, I think you referred to them as aesthetic decisions. What with are we gonna go where, right? Just because there's a lot of variability while still keeping, you know, in, uh, within the bounds relative to the preservation plan, right? What type of material, right? But then when it comes to project control, I don't think it's either the cemetery commissioners or the CPC that would would run the project necessarily. I think that it would either be highway or we need to take a look at the highway committee and see if we want to expand their scope to include project management for some of these things that are not quite highway but would typically fall under D P W.
So I'm gonna just, because the Cemetery Commission is not here, I'm gonna then say, okay, they are the same elected board that you just made very clear that the planning board.
Right.
They're the ones that put the article forward, right? And now I'm gonna let Ron take over and explain what town council specifically said regarding the article in 23 and the article in 25.
Uh, yes, with regards to the article in 23, it was article 17 at the annual town meeting. I'll just read it verbatim how it was presented. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer or borrow a sum of money for the Brookfield Cemetery Department to pave two cemetery roads plus incidental costs or take any other action relative thereto. The official motion in the annual town meeting minutes is the town voted to transfer the sum of $60,000 from free cash to the cemetery department to pave two roads plus incidental costs and further to commit the motion to a committee consisting of two members from the, from and appointed by the Historical Commission, one member from the Highway Department, two members from and appointed by the Cemetery Commission, two members at large appointed by the Select Board, and one member from and appointed by the Conservation Commission to report to the Select Board in three months. So as I provided that to town council and basically asked the question, who, who is in charge and who is authorized to utilize that $60,000? Her opinion was, was pretty clear cut. She said at no point was the Cemetery Paving Committee indicated to be in charge of that. Yet in both the the actual article itself and in the motion, the Cemetery Commission is, is discussed with regards to $60,000. So her opinion is that $60,000 is under the authority, for lack of a better term, of the Cemetery Commissioners. So that's where, I guess if we fast forward to the article that was presented, basically saying that the Cemetery Commission is in charge of $60,000. As Michelle said, she goes, could you leave it on there? She said, yeah, but you're really not going to accomplish anything because if, if it isn't accepted, it doesn't really change anything. But if it is accepted, once again, it doesn't change anything. Because even in the article, it's not like saying if it's rejected, it's not saying that that money then goes to the paving committee because there's no indication town meeting wanted that to occur. So as she said, you can't infer something that isn't specific in the the motion itself.
Can I respond to that? That's a legal interpretation and I'm not sure we disagree that the Cemetery Commission has oversight of the $60,000 that's spent. What we are saying is not how it's spent is, you know, it's what is it spent for?
Yeah, that is true.
And so we're talking again about, we're not asking to control $60,000. We're asking to say aesthetically, following the preservation management plan, here are the guidelines that are designated by the Massachusetts Historic Guidelines for Historic Cemeteries. It also follows the guidelines because it's a historic site and a very significant historic site. The national, there's a national guidelines. Alls we are saying is we should follow those guidelines. If you want to spend $60,000 or $100,000, we're not, the CPC is not there to, uh, question that. We are, we just say aesthetically, make sure we follow the preservation plan. So I don't know if that is a legal issue or not, but.
It's certainly nothing that town council, town council opined on for the simple fact it, it wasn't in the the motion from 2023 and it wasn't in the article that was presented in 2025.
So, you know, you know, this whole thing is a, is a communication issue, you know, and that's, it all started, most, most problems are communication issue. So if we had started off right on the right foot, I think we never would have been in this position. But simply, we're asking for just a few aesthetic decisions and I think we can come to them very, very quickly in a minute, one or two minute meetings. And that's what we're here, not to make work for everybody, whatever, but let's just get on with what the intent was and not the legal situation.
Yeah, because here's the thing, and and frankly, while I hear what town council is saying, in terms of spending the money, running the project, they're saying it's under the purview of the independent board, okay? But town meeting wouldn't have bothered to appoint Cemetery Paving Commission and direct the select board to appoint the Cemetery Paving Commission if there wasn't something that that needed to be addressed by a group that wasn't the Cemetery Commissioners because they had failed to do any of the considerations associated with that prior to submitting their article. And that was the townspeople at town meeting saying y'all were negligent and didn't include that in your original, um, proposal on the, on the town meeting warrant. And they took action on the town meeting floor as our legislative body to say. And they took action on the town meeting floor as our legislative body to say, "We don't only care about the dollars, we also care about the preservation plan and the historic investment and the continuity of ensuring that we're doing this the right way." So, I think we can meet the intent, right? We can abide by the law. Cemetery commissioners, you're in charge of the project. However, we still need to get a report, and we don't have adequate information from the meetings that occurred, of what, we're still functionally owed the report from the cemetery paving commission. You know, if it's two years late, so be it, okay? Let's get a couple meetings on the calendar. Let's get something in place that's consistent with the preservation plan, and let's just be done with this, right?
Ron, can you do me one favor? Could you read the article that was presented that made the warrant for this year? Just, let's read that and then incorporate that into moving forward.
Yeah, I don't think I have that here in my notes.
I've got it, if you need it.
Of course he does. Of course Donald hasn't. Well, that's...
Article 17, "See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer or borrow a sum of money for the Brookfield Cemetery Department to pave two cemetery roads plus incidental costs..."
So, that's in 23. We're looking for the one that was submitted in 25, that is not done. Okay, that's what we're looking for.
Because, of course, it was submitted without consulting the historical commission.
You can read it?
I'm gonna pass it.
Article 26.
26.
"To see if the town will vote to approve the Brookfield Cemetery Commission to be responsible for the money that was approved at the 2023 annual town meeting to be used to repave the roads for that purpose or take any action relative thereto."
And what's the note also?
"The reason for this proposed article is that the cemetery commission and cemetery paving committee came to terms that the cemetery paving would be done with chip seal as suggested by the cemetery preservation plan. The paving committee terms have expired, and now the project has to be completed by the cemetery commission with the money that has been allocated by the town."
So, when they talk about the chip seal in that article, are you in agreement? So, is this just a misunderstanding that we don't have the exact footage of where it's going to start, where it's going to start? Or is it because it's not specific enough as to what type of chips? If you'd expand on that.
All of the above.
I was gonna say all of the above, but I was gonna let Kermit say it, because great minds think alike.
The, just stepping back to Ryan, and just, this is kind of an emotional thing. He said, "I want a very specific detailed specification from this committee. I don't want to go through Central Street again," where he was given the project oversight but not given the specific details. We committed to giving him the details, and that detail included what they call, it should be chip stone. Chip seal is a process, chip stone is what they... The only thing we agreed to was, yes, we will use chip stone, chip seal, whatever. We did not agree, we discussed where the road was going to start, where it was going to finish. No, we didn't get any commitment on that. The, one of the cemetery commissioners said, "There are four kinds of chip stone or chip seal." We never agreed on what they were. There's various colors. We never agreed on what colors they are. And the concept, we thought, because the preservation plan says that the roads should be compatible with the oldest section of that cemetery. And by the way, just for your information, the preservation plan covers the entire 43 acres of that cemetery. The historic district is also the 43 entire acres of that cemetery. So, when people argue, "Well, it's a new section," that is a historic district, where the furthest east person is interred there, they are in the historic district, and it's designated by the preservation plan. So, there's only like, the color and the type, where the roads start and finish, and the width. Critical that we don't have a wide road in this historically sensitive cemetery.
So, again, I'll state that I do believe the appointments should follow the money, and until the money's spent or until you guys have come to an agreement. But I also want to point out, like the planning board just said, they, and Beth said, they are an elected board. How would you expect the Board of Selectmen to control this? Because I don't know that we have any oversight of that elected board.
To control what?
If they choose to hire a contractor to do the paving of those two roads, they would be limited to the two roads. But how does the Board of Selectmen, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that what town council was alluding to?
There's no authority, select board, over the cemetery commissioners, both duly elected.
No, but we can, so there's a couple of things, Rich, let's be honest.
So, wait a minute, let me just say this. We've asked the board to come tonight. Did any of them get back to you, Karen, in the email that you sent?
I invited the paving committee. Mike said that he, leave it to him that he is going to contact the commissioners.
Oh, so we don't, so the fact that they weren't here, then, maybe they weren't notified. I understood that they were notified.
I think, I don't know whether they were notified or not, but he told me to leave it to him, that he was contacting them. And this morning, I did talk to him, because I said, I didn't notice that they didn't post a joint meeting, so I had a concern about that. But he said, "Don't worry about it."
So, sorry to waste your time. I assumed that they were going to be here this evening so that we could hash this out and hopefully come to a good resolution. So, and I was really hoping to do this before the annual town meeting, right? So, I would be willing to set up another meeting next week before the annual town meeting, make sure the cemetery commissioners are invited, as well as...
Geez, okay, I guess they, pardon me for interrupting here, Rich.
But I'm as dumbfounded as you are that they were...
This is, we've had a number of meetings where things were discussed, and other things were discussed, and they were not, well, I don't want to get into that, I don't want to get into that. But I want to go back to the legal, the legal issue. I think as a taxpayer, and in this town, and we've voted to have the cemetery paving committee, again, say, what has to be done? If they want to spend $60,000 or $40,000 or $80,000, that's up to them. What is the issue of not just getting a committee together just to come up with the aesthetics? You know?
So, the one thing I would be willing to do tonight is reappoint...
Yes.
The paving committee.
A hundred percent.
So, I think that's the first step.
Yeah, I'll make that motion. I'll make the motion to reappoint the...
We've had a change in some of the boards, so we need to ask Steve Carmen if he'd be willing to serve, because the conservation chair was part of it before. I'm not sure who else is missing. Oh, the highway superintendent was another one, right?
Yeah.
So...
But he's ex officio, as far as I'm concerned. So, we appoint Kyle, he'll show up because we tell him to. And he won't show up because he's a good guy, but he'll show up because we tell him to.
The composition as delineated at the 2023 town meeting is, two members from the historical commission, one member from the highway department, unnecessarily even the supervisor, the highway department, two members from the cemetery commission, two at-large members appointed by the select board, and one member from the conservation commission.
Okay.
And their mission, if you will, according to the minutes, is to provide a report to the select board.
Yeah, go ahead, Beth, take it in front with it. You make the motion.
Well, I guess, I guess do we need the names for the committee members? So, Donald, who was it from the historical commission?
Well, wasn't it Ron and I?
I'm sorry.
It wasn't Ron and I, it was you.
Okay.
It won't be me.
It won't be you.
No.
The names are right here.
Right, right. Okay. So, Ron, are you willing? Okay. So, we would need somebody else from historical?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll find one.
You'll find one. Okay, fair enough. You're a good man, so how many, how many can we get tonight? So...
Peter, are you still in? Are you outpaced on your remote?
Okay, so Peter's in. Kermit, are you in?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
I hope you're in, but I had to ask, right? So, Ron is in. Steve, are you in?
When do you meet?
We're gonna try to put a meeting together ASAP to try to hit this before the town meeting.
If you need evenings, I can...
This coming week. Is there any day you said you can't make it?
Wednesday night.
Wednesday night.
Sure.
I think Wednesday would be the first that we could do it.
Oh, no.
No, you could post it, you could post it for Tuesday.
Tomorrow, yeah.
You could post it for Tuesday. So, would Tuesday evening be okay?
Yeah.
What time is the earliest you can do?
5:30.
Okay.
I'd prefer seven. The seven, is that okay? Is that okay with you, seven?
I will have another member. I need to have another...
No, no, but we're tentatively trying to come up with a date.
Next Tuesday at seven.
I think we're gonna run into an issue with the 48 hours.
No, you're not.
Unless we do it at 8 o'clock.
No, it's Thursday today. Friday, it can be posted, just because we're not open, doesn't mean it can't be posted on the website.
Can you get somebody to...
As long as it's posted...
Friday counts. Friday counts. It does not matter that we're not in this town hall. If you want me to go ahead and get on my town government and post it for y'all, I'll see if I can get my administrative permissions back.
I'll post it tonight.
Okay.
I'll post it before I come tonight, yeah.
All right.
What was the date? Next Tuesday?
Yeah.
The planning board is gonna have a meeting next Tuesday?
It's Wednesday.
Wednesday?
It's Wednesday. Hi, Kevin, sorry. It's Wednesday? Wednesday.
Good, bye.
Okay, so we've got, so now I guess the biggest question is, is Patterson or Mike Siri, do we just reappoint them?
Well, I'd like to invite the whole port.
Okay, of the cemetery commission, right.
Yeah.
But which of, so should we just reappoint them to the cemetery paving commission?
Yes.
But isn't it just two members?
Right, so that's...
It's three members, and Mike is not a member.
Right.
Now, you have four.
You know, just two, two members.
It's supposed to be just two on the side.
Yeah, they both went. I think it's a joint meeting.
Beth, who was on it before?
Oh, this was a joint meeting?
Yeah.
A point of clarification here, why there wasn't, why Mike Siri was on it, because he's not a cemetery commissioner, was that if they had two people there, it would be a quorum, and they could not...
Right, so they...
So, he substituted for a cemetery commissioner.
Okay, well, that explains that. Well, then, or else they would have had to post it as a joint meeting, fundamentally.
Well, it would have really...
So, okay.
They did at times.
I think they did.
Yeah, because this was a joint meeting.
Yeah. He's a secretary, and he's not commissioner. He was a member of the South. Was he at large?
Wow.
Was he at large?
No, he was on the cemetery. They just woke up one guy, and then had him.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and make a motion that we reappoint Patrick O'Day, Mike Siri, Kermit Eaton, Peter Mazuso, Ron Couture to the cemetery paving commission, and appoint as new members Kyle Rikowski.
Yes.
I always get his, I always do a terrible job. And Stephen Carmen.
Second.
Any discussion? Steve, you have a chance to opt out right here, we have...
We have another one of your members here. He's in his first duty.
Steve wanted to go to the cemetery meeting. One thing at a time.
One thing at a time, there you go.
All in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
When do we have to get back to you with the historic commission member? Do we have to get back to you?
Well, as soon as possible, but technically, you have enough members to get a quorum. So, you currently, you currently have enough members to have a meeting.
I'm sorry? You'll do it?
He wants to.
He's gonna, Don's gonna...
Oh, you want to speak?
Oh, oh, yeah.
You want to speak? Good, okay. From my point of view, I'm sorry that this thing had to take up so much of your time. It didn't have to be, but it had, so apologize to the board.
Sometimes the lack of communication just evolves the mess, or hopefully, it's just the lack of communication. Come on up, Tom. So, I will be brief, believe it or not. I can remember when you used to tell me to come on in, back in the seventh grade, so...
Richard, you're aging.
The historical commission has not discussed this in almost two years now. What we were concerned about at the time was that the preservation plan be followed. That's still our, that's still their concern, I'm not gonna speak for them on that. And what the selecting, if they want a role in this, is to determine if the preservation plan is not followed, what are the implications for applying for any further grants for that place and fundraising if the literature that you need to submit references the cemetery preservation plan and you're not following it? So, I think the three of you need to come to grips with that and then have a conversation with the cemetery commissioners about the implications of it. That's where the cemetery issue from the historical commission is, it where it is. I'm away next week, so you won't get me, and the historical commission is gonna meet before then, so you won't get a second, second member from them either, so.
Okay.
Karen, oh, thank you.
Could I come back one more?
Sure.
Yes. We were told by the accountant that the way the preservation fund was placed in the cemetery commission's budget, because it was considered to go into the general budget, and somebody said, "You don't want to put it in the general budget, because you gotta go through a process to get money out." They put it in the cemetery commission's budget, the preservation money. She said, "They, legally, they have full authority to take that money and spend it any way they want." She said, "The way to get around that is to have the historic commission vote to say, 'We will mutually agree to how the money is spent,'" and they did. We went to the cemetery commission and asked them if they would mutually agree to, on spending any money out of the preservation fund. They voted no. No. They said they would have exclusive right to use preservation funds under their total jurisdiction, and I think that's what Don was talking about, which I didn't want to bring up at this meeting, but it's particularly disturbing the way this article, this situation goes, what's gonna happen going forward. And just for the two men sitting in this room who put the preservation fund together that generated $115,000 without any money coming from the town, donors, from grants, came from Peter and Ron Couture, cemetery commission, historic commission, and $115,000 that the taxpayers didn't have to pay. Some of this project, this project right here, could have used perpetual care funds, perhaps grants, because once you, as Don said, once you have a preservation pump fund and you have a historic designation, and you follow that rigorously, you can get grants pretty easily. That wasn't even considered for this project, and that was disturbing to me personally as a taxpayer, that we were spending $60,000... And that was disturbing to me personally as a taxpayer, that we were spending $60,000 of taxpayers' money when probably at least half of it could have gone from grants and donors and so forth.
All right. Well, thank you.
Can I come on?
Absolutely.
One more time?
Yep.
Peter Mazzuso, 15 River Street. I was on the commission for 13 years, and you can see the award up here, and that's the results of Ron's work and the historic commission and a lot of work that we did together. And, you know, I think, Rich, when you said, you know, how do we as a select board have authority over the commission? Because the commission is a standalone commission in this town, and that goes back well before I ever served on the committee. So, you know... And I don't know how that process happened, that the town of Brookfield has a standalone cemetery commission versus a commission that reports to the Board of Selectmen. So down the road, does it ever get changed or is it okay the way it is? It worked okay as it is for decades and decades. My concern around this is that ultimately the select board is just signing authority on any contracts for this town, including the cemetery.
Good point.
Okay? So even though the commission stands alone, no contract can be signed by the cemetery commission. It has to come from the Board of Selectmen as the appointing authority. They have the bonds, you know, and they check everything. So ultimately, it ends at your desk. So I just want to make sure that everyone's aware of that. Thank you. All right. You're welcome.
Kermit, here. I want to take this one. It's the article.
Well, we will try to get that set up. We'll get the meeting set up and we'll notify everyone on the committee. And hopefully, it's just simply a miscommunication and hopefully at the next meeting, we can wrap this up.
Nick? Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. You know, thank you for your time.
Harry, item number 13 on the agenda. Changing back the meetings to Tuesdays. Beth, we chose not to really make any decision while you weren't here, so...
That's one in the win swap. I don't know about some of the other ones, but...
We took an opportunity to deal with some business while you weren't here.
The calendars, the only thing we could actually talk about outside the meeting. So it's ironic that you'd wait for the meeting for this one, but that's okay.
So what are your thoughts on Tuesdays? It's good for me. It's after last week. It's good for Sarah.
Yeah, what do you think?
It's good for Ron to do notices after our meeting versus waiting till the following Monday he comes in. But we... I'd like to hear, you know, where you stand there.
It stinks for me, but if it's so much better for everybody else, I guess I'll throw myself on the Tuesday grenade.
Is there another day that's better other than...
No. So Tuesday is the least worst of the other days, if that makes any sense. Monday and Wednesday are not feasible for me at all.
So while Brad was here, I thought it was Brad that couldn't do any other day, couldn't do Tuesday. So I thought it was going to be an easy one for you, but I...
There's some things that I was hoping to start back up with that are on Tuesdays that I guess I won't. So... But that's, you know, that's a preference. But it is what it is.
I think it'd be incredibly cumbersome to alternate Tuesdays, Thursdays. Like, I think that would be very difficult for me. I don't know. It just would be difficult.
It's called a calendar, but that's okay.
No, it's just not really. I mean...
He's old. He doesn't have a calendar.
So...
Date planner? You don't have pen and ink.
I do. I don't think he does.
So...
I mean, I'm not going to fight it. If it's better for the two of you, I will figure it out.
I mean, we did agree on one thing tonight.
One?
The paving committee.
Paving committee.
So...
That one's more important.
Back that down, Karen, will you please?
We need to start keeping a calendar.
Yeah.
So, okay.
I'm not going to argue about Tuesdays. I need to... Tuesdays work better for me. I'm sorry, but...
That's all right.
So sorry.
So...
The last meeting, you did eventually try to block that out like in three months or one month or two months so that...
That's correct.
Yes.
If you can, ahead of time, post them online and just say, agenda will be posted closer to the meeting. And then at least we'll block it out for other people that might want to... Or for people who want to look ahead and find out when the meeting's being held.
This is a point of information. When advisory committee used to be, the third, I think it was the Thursday, and it was Tom or Brad, whoever, had to flip it to Tuesday. So we flipped it. And then for the last two years, advisory committee, we've been basically, every time we meet, we're trying to... Tuesday good, Wednesday good, Thursday good. So this would help us also, I think, put a little more consistency, which we would appreciate.
What, are you all going to do Thursdays if we're doing Tuesdays?
Well, we just... We alternate because if we want to go to the select board meeting and we're meeting at the same time, then we can.
Nice.
We try to be actively involved in whatever's going on just from a financial standpoint. So either way, it's fine. If you do it on Tuesday, then we might go back to meeting on Thursday. Because right now, we're doing Tuesdays because you're on Thursday.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion that the board will meet on Tuesdays versus Thursdays.
Starting when?
Your motion?
After town meeting.
We actually don't need a motion. I mean, I hate to put it this way. You're the chair. You put the meeting where you want to put it.
Yeah.
And the calendar is the one thing we can talk about outside of the meeting, so...
Also, but I don't know why you keep talking about outside the meeting. There's no discussion outside the meeting. What I'm referring to is the meeting that you weren't there, that we had discussion about.
Yeah. Okay.
So I want to clarify that.
Okay.
Because this is now not the first meeting that you said that. You said it at a previous meeting.
Yep.
So, no, I think it's appropriate to wait till after the town meeting myself. So are you...
I'm here with him.
All right. Fair enough.
So let me just make sure, because I'm typing this out. Sarah, you entertain a motion to meet on Tuesdays.
Beth made it clear we don't need a motion, so we're going to have... We're going to have meetings on Tuesdays.
And we're going to move Tuesdays, yeah.
After the town meeting.
Tuesdays after.
So that's going to be June 10th. Be the first Tuesday after the town meeting.
Sure.
Harry?
Oh, which is the one Tuesday that's going to really be the problem. Let me just check something really quick. Do you mind?
Maybe we could start the week after.
Maybe do. Let me just check because that... I may have... I have training, I think, that week. Hold on a second. Let's see here. Is it that week? It is. So the ninth and 10th.
Just to be safe, we'll do it the following.
If we can.
Yeah.
If we can wait until the... If we can wait until the following meeting, that would be great. Because, I mean, I might look fancy, but I really hate getting off the road and coming straight to meetings.
No, that's... That's fine. There's definitely some flexibility, so...
Thank you.
So we'll start on the 17th for the Tuesdays.
Okay. Harry, item number 14. I've asked Ron to do a little research into our old policies. I've been on the board for a year. I haven't heard of any new policies, any old policies. I don't know how long they've been on the books here, so I just asked Ron to take a look into that and...
Yeah. Didn't... Actually, Karen was able to find literally a few dozen online policies. Haven't really had a chance to review them. We could certainly send them. I think Sarah's already got a head start. We can certainly send them to Rich and Beth.
There was a manual policy book.
And we... I literally found it today.
Okay, yeah. Does it buy here?
Yeah, and it's about... Yeah, it's about yay big. Found it actually on the second flight of stairs in my office.
Okay.
So I have not had a chance to go through it. I will compare it versus what we had electronically online and...
I will tell you that binder is the official.
That's the official, okay.
And the official is the binder because what you'll find in that binder, because